It's in the federal court system. The federal court system is open to your staff.
I don't want to be the one to be like, I wonder if you should start something.
I heard you were talking about.
I'm guessing.
I am ready.
Ready? Oh, wait, wait.
I mean, I, nothing, nothing that I know of over there about that.
Whenever you're ready, Russ.
Shannon couldn't find a pie.
Okay. Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of September 12th, 2022 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 7th, 2022, according to public law, 1975, Chapter 231. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Zambrana?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
And for the record, Councilman Potter is absent this evening. Councilman Revelinsky?
Here.
Five present. Thank you. Okay. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the move to our flag. Our flag alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from our August 15th, 2022 meeting. May I have a motion of second?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Revelinsky, second by Councilman Peretti. Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close audience comments on resolutions and move on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read by title only Bill Resolution 202-2022?
Resolution 202, 2022 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $2,224,079.45.
You've read it, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Revelinsky, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
And Councilman Revelinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and if so removed will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are exported by a certification of availability of funds. Any questions or does anyone want to pull any resolutions from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. 211 and 213, please.
211 and 213. Okay. Anyone else? All right. So will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Revelinsky, second by Council President Zambrana. Any discussion?
Yes.
Excuse me. Margaret, did you second?
Oh, I thought they said it at the same time. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion of the consent resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're going to, we're going to go back.
I'm going to step ahead, sorry.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Revelinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass resolutions 203 through 214, with the exception of 211 and 213 at this time.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the resolution number 211, 2022 by title?
A resolution of the Council of the Borough of Milltown pursuant to NJSA 4811-6 ratifying the ward of an emergency contract without competitive bidding as an exception to the bidding statutes.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Would the resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Peretti, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, this question might be for Jeanette or BA, but I'm just wondering that the $44,000 roughly, or 44 and a half of this resolution for the work at 27 East Lawrence, can you explain to me how this falls outside of our emergency contract work for them and why this requires?
We don't have an emergency contract.
We don't have an emergency contract for water sewer?
No.
How did, how?
This, we, we don't have one. So it expired and a new one has not been put out.
When do they typically expire? That's annual, isn't it? Or biannual, we?
The last one expired, I want to say maybe 2020?
And the funds for this would be coming out of what budget then?
Well, it would come out of the same budget as if we had a contract that comes out of the water sewer operating budget. Even when we have a contract, that's where it comes out, of the same budget.
So was it intentional that we didn't have a contract?
No.
Or, I mean, I'm just wondering if, like, was there a specific reason we didn't want to? Is it allow us greater ability to pick and choose when someone's available or?
Sometimes, yes, yes. And we've been doing a lot more work in-house. So before we had the contract and all of the work was being subbed out, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Actually, more, but I guess Councilwoman Peretti will probably speak to it later with his report, I'm sure, with the, the turnpike crossing.
No, I'm talking about this resolution.
Yeah, no, no, that's it for this one.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
And Councilman Revelinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Resolution 213, 2022 by title?
Resolution of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of grant allowance.
Heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the motion to be adopted. Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Newbauer, second by Councilman Peretti. Any discussion?
Yes, pulled this one because I noticed even though it's a small amount of $48.41 of unexpended grant monies for recycling enhancement, I'm just wondering when this was expiring and, you know, what could we have used this for that we couldn't spend $48?
This grant was for the purchase of reusable bags. So we purchased everything we could and that's the small amount that was.
Okay, so it was only allowed for the reusable bags?
Only specific purpose.
Okay.
Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
And Councilman Revelinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass 213.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to introduce an ordinance. There will be no public input on the introduction of Ordinance 221515. The introduction summary will be published in the Home News Tribune on.
Nine, I'm sorry. It should be nine sixteen.
Nine sixteen, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if it was nine or ten. September 16th, 2022, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on September 27th, 2022. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
221515 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Property Maintenance, of revised general ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, to regulate invasive plant species within the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 221515?
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Revelinsky, second by Councilwoman.
Yeah, she's got to get a fist now.
Okay, yeah, I can't tell who got in for it. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
And Councilman Revelinsky?
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce Ordinance 221515.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the council reports. The first one is Department of Public Safety. Councilman Potter is away on business, so Councilman Zambrana?
Yeah, I'll take care of those.
We'll take care of it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first report for tonight is from the Rescue Squad, the Milltown Rescue Squad, for August 2022. Total monthly calls, 131, broken down by Milltown, New Jersey Turnpike Mutual Aid and County Fair. We look forward to seeing you at the Recreation Department's Touch a Truck event on September 24th and at Milltown Day on October 1st. Anyone who is interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescuesquad.org to learn more. Happy to answer any questions, respectfully submitted by Will Kaplan. Milltown Rescue Squad has been proudly serving Milltown since 1937. My second report is for the Police Department and this is from Chief Brian Cannelly. Chief Cannelly wants to wish or hope everyone had a happy and healthy summer as we welcome our students back to school. Between August 10th, 2022 and September 5th, 2022, police responded to 662 calls for service. During this period, police conducted 60 radar details in numerous locations. Police also made 53 motor vehicle stops during this period. Eleven arrests which were made, which included shoplifting, possession of drugs, and contempt of court. Police responded to 15 motor vehicle accidents, which included minor injuries. Residents are reminded to continue to drive safely and to use extra caution as school has returned and pedestrian traffic will increase, especially in the mornings and in the early afternoons. The Milltown Police Department is currently accepting applications for full and part-time records, clerk secretary, part-time crossing guards, and part-time police dispatchers. Applications are available online at www.milltownnj.org or in person at the Milltown Borough Clerk's office. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergency type calls to 732-828-1100. Emergency and life-threatening calls use 911. Any concerns or complaints can be submitted by using the official Borough website or by calling the Milltown Police directly. Thank you for your cooperation, Chief Brian Cannelly. Last public safety report is from the Milltown Fire Department, August 2022. There were, so I'm going to read off the events. Three drills, one meeting, 12 fire calls, five special assignments, and five work details. Department coordinated with five other fire departments to become a certified member of a large diameter hose strike team that will help supply large volumes of water at fires throughout the county and the state. New car 81 was restripped. Hose testing was completed by Reliant Hose Testing. New holes will be ordered, but turnaround time is approximately six months due to supply chain issues. Pump and ground ladder testing was performed on all four apparatuses. All four passed thanks to an aggressive maintenance plan and monitoring, monitoring by the department personnel. Joint training is scheduled with MRS on electric hybrid vehicle emergencies with roadway rescue. Preventive maintenance was done on Engine 62, 72, and 63. Ladder 73 is scheduled for preventive maintenance and aerial testing. Engine 62 continues to require repairs. Often this truck is taken out of service due to mechanical repair. There was an issue with this is that this particular truck is the truck that was used to certify with the large diameter hose strike team. Equipment maintenance. One chainsaw was taken out of service due to not running correctly. It will be serviced. SCBA packs were flow tested and fixed as needed. One SCBA bottle valve was replaced. Wheel chocks were ordered for the MVA stabilization. So my last comment here or my last announcement from the Fire Department is that members are needed. Candidates who are interested in, who are interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at 6:30 p.m. or to email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com, respectfully submitted by Chief Stephen Patel. And that concludes my public safety reports.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Utilities. Councilman James Parry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Starting with the electric utility. An outage was reported on Hubbard Avenue. A transformer and a broken primary wire was repaired. A truck hit a Verizon and Optimum wires on Fern and caused the utility pole to break. Utility secured that pole with the Digger Derrick truck while Verizon set a new pole and anchor. A new transformer was installed and existing power wires were transferred to the new pole. Several house services needed to be repaired and the streetlight was also reinstalled. Line clearance was performed on Herbert Avenue where trees had grown into the secondary conductors. Borough's diesel generators in various facilities have been tested for proper operation. A broken exhaust fan motor was removed from Elkins Lane Pump Station and a new motor was purchased to replace it. Several new homes are being built in town and the department is working with contractors to assist planning new electrical services. Department members, department members also assisted the Water Department with a water main break on Byer Avenue. The water services to Brookside Swim Club had to be turned off to make an emergency repair to the water service. Department members responded to several downed wire calls to clear phone and cable TV wires from roadways and sidewalks. All were cleared safely. A sinkhole was reported on Hubbard Avenue next to a utility pole. The area was coned off and the adjacent store drain catch basin will have to be further evaluated. Streetlights have been repaired or replaced on several streets throughout the borough. The department worked with the Billing Department to rectify billing issues and replace malfunctioning meters. I'd like to add the monthly reminder from the utility department to that electric meters are to be accessible to meter readers. They are always encountering properties throughout town that some have lock gates or have vegetation blocking the meters. Please trim vegetation in front of meters. Overgrown bushes could limit access, conceal business, and cause estimated bills. There are other options. Again, the usual reminder, residents can fill out their monthly reading cards and submit them to the Billing Department or residents can take pictures of their electric and water meters and send them to the following email address. A H A M M at milltownborough.com. That's A Ham at milltownborough.com. Cards are available at the Billing Office. Now moving on to the water and sewer report. Along with the daily work orders, markouts, and emergency markouts, the department has the following to report. Hydrant was replaced at 24 Desmond. The cleaning of the Elkins Lane property has been completed. Hydrant flushing will be done in the fall and notice will be given to all residents. The sixth month lead testing of homes, as per the DEP, will be occurring within the next few weeks. Root treatment is ongoing for the sewers. And as Councilwoman Revelinsky mentioned about the turnpike, on August 18th, there was a, a noticeable drop in water pressure throughout town due to a water level in the water tank decreasing. Water was noticed surfacing in the vicinity of the turnpike. The water main was isolated and that water leak subsequently subsided. Further inspection by DPW and CME is underway to evaluate the condition of the casing in order to determine the options for repair and replacement. And I'm sure I'll pass the mic when his report comes out if there's any further questions. But that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Works and Recycling. Councilwoman Anna Newbauer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with all garbage collection and scheduled bulk collections, the DPW has the following to report. Fire hydrant painting has taken place throughout town and will continue. Line painting has taken place in preparation for the opening of school. The grounds of the William Street Water Tower property were, was clean. And residents should be on the lookout for nixels and notifications because milling and paving will be beginning in the next few weeks and notifications will be sent out to those areas that will be impacted. Tree removal has taken place and will continue to take place as manpower permits. And several DPW employees will be beginning their CDL training, which includes both classroom and on-the-road training. Street sweeping is also ongoing as men, as manpower permits. Some exciting October updates. Look out for the DPW at the Milltown Day on October 1st. Leave bags will be available at the DPW garage from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. starting October 3rd. I do have to clarify because the report didn't say Monday through Friday, but I'm pretty sure that's Monday through Friday.
Okay.
There is a paper shredding event on October 8th. There is a paper shredding event on October eighth in the American Legion Parking Lot starting at nine AM. And concrete collection will take place for this quarter on October tenth through October fourteen. As a reminder, you must call seven-three-two, eight-two-eight, twenty-one-hundred, extension one-eight-six for an appointment to have your concrete picked up. Please check Channel fifteen at milltownnj.org for further DPW updates. And that is all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Recreation. Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin tonight with the mention of the Library Board. The September meeting has been canceled since we didn't enjoy a summer meeting off. And the next meeting will be the second Tuesday, which is October eleventh at six-thirty, recognizing that it is in conflict with our Borough Council meeting, but they decided to plod on without me. I'm not hurt at all. Few upcoming library events. Storytime. There's a relatively new storytime that is a babysit, so I wanted to call that to everyone's attention. There's also a new writers' group, Drop-In Crafts, Lego Club, Read with the Pooch. Something new starting this month is food for fines. And if you have an overdue library book, for every can, box, or bag of food, a dollar will be forgiven from any overdue fine, so drop off your food donations at the library. Winter's Workshop, which will be sand art this month. The library is the location of the Touch a Truck event that's already been mentioned, but they'll also be co-located with the Friends of the Library Book Sale. There is another COVID vaccine clinic coming up at the end of September, the twenty-seventh, from ten AM to three PM. The book club is ongoing, and it has been a Read What You Want book club, and it only touches on a theme. You can pick whichever book in that theme, and this month it is technology. The Friends of the Library's twenty-twenty-three calendar is on sale for ten dollars. And you can follow the library on Instagram and Facebook. Moving on to the Recreation Department report from Director Ron Sefaloon. Our Borough Pool closed for the season on Labor Day, September fifth. Thanks to everyone involved for making this year a success, and we look forward to seeing everyone back at the pool in twenty-twenty-three. Please visit Community Pass for a number of fall programs, including, and I'm sure I won't have all of them, so please do visit Community Pass to make sure for any that I may have missed here. Fall soccer, pickup basketball, Monday and Wednesday yoga, volleyball, Tennis Foundation, Multi-Sports Clinic. There'll be a new pickup kickball session, and there's a cruise coming up along the Toms River. That is on Friday, September twenty-third. And he asked that you please help us continue to make Milltown Recreation a community in motion. From the Recreation Advisory Committee, the next meeting will be Wednesday, September twenty-first at seven. There are two seats available on the committee, so we encourage people to use the Citizen Leadership application on the Borough website to fill those seats. The Historic Preservation Committee. I'll try to bring this up in more detail in new business, but there was a missed grant opportunity because the grant, we became aware of the grant after the Borough's budgeting process had taken place. So the Historic Preservation Committee discussed this and wanted to make a suggestion to hopefully set aside some funds for the grant that they missed, but other potential grants that come up in mid-year and we're just not aware of at the time that we do budgeting. And that would have helped offset some costs for some repairs on inside and outside of the historic buildings that they call the museum. We talked about landmarks and what exactly that means. The discussion was around the Smokestack, the Water Tower, the Main Street Firehouse, and the Schwendeman Property. We believe there is an opening on the committee. We're going to meet up with our Borough Clerk and confirm that that is accurate, but anyone who is interested in any openings on any of our committees can fill out the Citizen Leadership application on the website. And the next meeting is on Zoom on September twenty-second at six-thirty. And my last report I'm giving on behalf of Councilman Potter, who can be here tonight. I attended with him a Public Safety meeting on August thirtieth that was focused on the Fourth of July and how everything went and improvements possible for next year. The focus was primarily on the parade and fireworks. For the fireworks, it was a discussion mainly about what they refer to as the inclusion zone, which is a safety perimeter around where the actual fireworks are. And it's strict and stricter for next year enforcement. The parade focus was mostly around the end of the parade location and moving the floats and the people who are walking safely. There was also discussion about improving radio communication between all of the agencies that work on the safety for the Fourth of July parade. And that concludes my reports for tonight.
Thank you. So I was just looking at my emails, and I'm not sure if this is DPW or REC, so I'll ask the VA. Michelin Field has been closed for a few weeks now, correct? And I know that, I had heard the other day that we're putting up some netting, so it's closed just temporarily. Do we have any timeframe on when the nets are going to be put up?
I don't have a timeframe, only because a solution was designed. We are going to do it in-house, and so we have to order some telephone poles, and it all depends on how long that takes to get in. So, but we hope it's going to be in the short term.
So it should be closed for everything, right? No dogs, no people, nothing?
No, that's not my understanding. And I don't know if anyone wants it. It's just the batting. We don't want, you know, the baseballs. But I thought the park itself was open. It's just, you know.
Yes, it was my understanding because it wasn't my call or decision to close the field itself. The recommendation of the Advisory Committee had been to put up signage that if there were conflicts of interest, that, you know, batting that was going over the fence was taking place at the same time that people were using the playground, if it was creating a hazardous condition, if the police became aware of that, that there was something that was enforceable by saying, look, it says by permit use only, or look, it says, you know, the age limit here is, you know, twelve years old. So when that signage came in, the idea was that that would be something enforceable. But the netting is news to me, good news, that that's a potential in-house fix because the quotes that we were getting from external vendors were extremely expensive. I know that people were talking about how easy it would be to just put up some netting, add it to what was there, but the vendors didn't feel that way because they take on the liability if that comes down or if it doesn't work properly, and they were not willing to do that for less than it would, I think the lowest quote was something around fifty thousand dollars.
More than that even.
Yeah, and that was not a recent quote, and I think we all know that quotes go up within a very short amount of time these days with claims of supply chain issues and whatnot. So, but the field itself was the area that had been roped up, the backstop, I guess.
Also, as a follow-up about dogs, I'm not sure if it's all parks in town, but I do know it's clearly marked in Borough Parks, and I'm guessing it would also be marked in Michelin Park, that dogs are not supposed to be walked or be utilizing those parks in that fashion.
So it's just a temporary thing for safety. It's, and if anyone has any feedback or anything, when's the next REC Advisory Committee meeting?
We meet on the third Wednesdays, and that's the twenty-second, and we meet here in person in the Borough Hall.
Okay, sounds good. So hopefully it'll, it's good that we're doing it in-house, saving money, but we're working on it.
Yes.
Thank you for the information. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services. Councilman Richard Revulinski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick report this evening regarding the Environmental Commission. I think everyone's happy that we've finally introduced our invasive species ordinance. It's been a long time coming, some wonderful scientific names in there, but it is basically those species that you may or may not want coming over from your neighbor's property, inclusive of bamboo, ilanthus, poison ivy, and a myriad of other ones. So with adoption, hopefully at the next meeting, we will see some teeth to be able to enforce that, should your neighbor not be cleaning that up and it becoming a nuisance for you. We also took a look at the Schwendeman Property about a week and a half ago, or, oh gosh, Madam Mayor, what was it?
Couple weeks ago.
Two, three weeks ago now?
Couple weeks.
And I apologize, I was on vacation. I have to send out an email about that to try and get some better numbers on that, but we're looking to move forward with that property and finally do some work over there to clean it up and preserve. For the Revitalization Committee, the big news of the day is Milltown Day, October first, so be ready. Hopefully, it's a nice day, and we have some good weather. The rain date will be October second. And my last report would be in regards to the School Board as the liaison. I just wanted to mention that we had a meeting last month with some new curriculum regarding health for students in health ed and physical ed, and a lot of it comes down from the state. That was pretty well attended. The work at the school from the summer, the construction projects is nearly complete. The school's fully operational and functional, and everyone's back in their offices with a few touch-up items remaining due to backordered items. With that said, the school is back in session, so please drive safely and obey the traffic regulations for pickup and drop-off, and please be courteous. I know everyone wants to get the kids to school and get back to your home office and relax, but drive slow and be aware of the fact that we've got youngsters walking down the streets. And last but not least, the school is doing some strategic planning of their own. So the district's strategic planning is to have a kickoff meeting on September twentieth. That's Tuesday, September twentieth, followed by some follow-up meetings on October fourth and the eighteenth, and those will be held at Joyce Kilmer School Gymnasium. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, is the Environmental Committee, you know, send, do some help with information on how to prepare people when this ordinance passes? Because say I have bamboo in my yard, and it starts to encroach on my neighbors to sort of explain what my responsibility is versus, you know, I know I have to keep it out of the neighbor's yard, but hopefully they can, you know, I don't know if they have any plans to say, here's what you can do to get it so that it doesn't go on your neighbor's property.
Our council, Mr. Vignolo, and I had spoke at length with this, and we wanted to put some information out there on the website, means to identify and ways to control or eradicate, but then we were concerned with some of the shortfalls and, you know, God forbid we indicate a measure that someone deems later on unsafe or whatever. So at this point, if you have it or if you're going to have it, it's more about just reporting it and let the zoning officer notify the person that, you know, we're going to have some issues over there.
Yeah, and quite frankly, I wouldn't know one if it came up and bit me.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can, there's so much information that we didn't want to flood our own website with it, so.
Is it invasive, you know, is it on here or not?
So it is good. It's a good thing to review and be aware of, and, you know, if you have some issues, always call and question it, and hopefully our zoning officer will be able to take care of it.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Department of Finance Administration and Planning. Councilwoman Jeanette Rata.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council President.
So for finance, I don't really have any report this evening, other than to say our intent is to present the audit for twenty-twenty-one at the next meeting in open session. Ford Avenue, next meeting will be Tuesday, September twentieth. And then my last report is from the seniors, submitted by Debbie Cuddy. As we do each month, our regular classes that are offered at the Senior Center are billiards, strength training, Spanish, bingo, yoga, line dancing, arts and crafts, men's and women's club, and walk aerobics. In September, we have had a lot of exciting bus trips already. Just last Tuesday on September sixth, one of my favorites, I wish it would have went. The bus went to Entenmann's and Walmart, and on Wednesday, September seventh, the seniors took a trip to La Peep and Edison for brunch. Tomorrow, Tuesday, September thirteenth, the seniors have a bus trip to Boskov's, and on September fourteenth, they're taking a trip to Tavern on the Lake in Hightstown. On September twenty-eighth, the seniors will be going to TGI Fridays, and September twenty-ninth, the bus will be going to the Amish Market. On September twentieth, Kelly from the Milltown Borough Tax Office will be giving a presentation and answering questions at eleven-thirty AM, and on September twenty-second at twelve PM, Ralph Jasznowski from Public Works will also be giving a presentation. The ladies luncheon will be on Wednesday, September twenty-first at noon. As a reminder, the Senior Center is open Monday and Friday from eight AM to three PM now that the summer hours have ended. Seniors do not have to join the Milltown Senior Club or attend activities at the Senior Center to arrange a doctor's appointment or other trips, such as for food shopping, by use of our van. If anyone sixty years of age or older is interested in attending any of the programs and needs more information, please contact Debbie Cuddy at seven-three-two, two-nine-six, zero-six-eight-one, or email debby@dcuddy@milltownborough.com. And as always, additional information can be found at milltownnj.org and by navigating to the Senior Center homepage. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to our Administrator Report. Jeanette, anything to say?
Yeah, I just have two things. Just want to do another quick reminder that the next council meeting is not Monday, the twenty-sixth. It's actually the move to Tuesday, the twenty-seventh to recognize the Rosh Hashanah holiday. And then I also wanted to just take this opportunity to thank all of you for allowing us to have our third annual employee barbecue. I thought it was a great success, and I think everyone that attended had a lot of fun. So thank you for allowing us to do that.
Thank you for setting it up. Very nice.
That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Engineer Report, Mr. McCall.
Yes, Madam Mayor, just four items. First, as we've reported at several meetings, the Hag Avenue and Bateen Avenue work has been awarded. Our contractor is attempting to get the materials for the project. There is a possibility we found some pipe. Question is, can we install it deep enough for the class of pipe that is, so we're requesting the perform test bits were required by the contract anyway. Hopefully, we'll see those prior to your next meeting, so you can report some progress. Second on our list is Public Works Committee meeting is recommended to discuss the gas main replacement projects. There've been some changes, some modifications suggested that be discussed with Project Public Works Committee so that we can update the council on their schedule and what the work's going on. But there was a meeting with Ralph Jasznowski in our office, I think it was the day before yesterday, and at least we got some progress to what their plans are. You should know that Ralph has been on top of them requesting credits or some type of payment in lieu of the work that the boroughs do. For example, Hag and Bateen, which has been discussed at the floor here before, instead of having them pave that portion of the road, they're going to give a credit to the borough and also for Ackerman Am, so Ralph is on top of that, and he's making sure that he gets a fair share from the asking for that. But I suggest that you meet with them and have a discussion so you all know what the schedule is. Last is Clayton Court, actually, two more. Clayton Court improvements that we did receive approved from NJDOT. As you know, this is a DOT-funded project, and the work generally is included, which is what was discussed. We will discuss it quickly with the Public Works Committee, but essentially, the work is removing existing roadway, replacing it. Good news is it ties in very well, and we've included the under drains below the curb so we can connect liter drains and sump pumps into those utilities rather than have discharge on the street. If someone later on decides they want to connect one of their sump pumps to it, they can connect right into that structure. So that'll be there, and pretty much what we've standardized by your direction for years now. And lastly, we would also request, if there's no objections, that we will work with your Borough Clerk to schedule advertisement for bids. And regarding the water line, we are attempting to obtain prices for internal television inspection of the casing to determine what the condition of it is and whether or not that can be reused or not. So we're trying to get some of the TV, they can run a camera through the pipeline. It's about three hundred feet long, so it's a fairly lengthy line. The area is tight in there, but we can get an idea that whether the case is in decent shape, we might be able to save the borough some money rather than have to go through and drill a little pipe on it at the turnpike. More to come on that.
Any questions for, go ahead, Margaret.
I had a question about the sump pump connection that you mentioned. I always thought that was a big no-no to connect your sump pump to the.
Storm drain, yes, storm drain, no.
So what is it connecting to then, Mike?
No connection, sump pumps to your sanitary. No connection, sump pumps to your sanitary.
Okay, so it's connecting it to the storm instead?
It's okay, it's all storm water, so it's certainly okay. The problem is when you have a sump pump connected to your sanitary in the basement, generally no one connects it to the street, but typically, that's why we encourage it, so they can get them out of the sanitary and connect the sump pump. Also prevent the discharge of the water at the curb line, make it tend to cause an ice damage or something people don't really care for anymore.
Perfect. I think that's exactly what people need and appreciate the clarification.
Yep, and it's something you're going to see in most of towns now, because this issue of trying to get your storm water out of the sanitary has become a big problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question.
Sure.
Actually, so is it my understanding that the meeting with the PSENG also was coordinating? Because we have our capital road improvement that we're going to start, so I know that they've been working on a lot to coordinate that we don't pave a road that they're going to then tear up? Was that a discussion of timing it out of, you're going, they're going to fix this street, and then we can come later on and pave?
Exactly. Ackerman's a perfect example, because you had on your list of roads to improve this year, and Ralph is right on top of them, so rather than spend money milling and overlaying half the road, you're going to get that as a credit for future work, and then you'll have the county committee to work with you playing. But I think that there's enough of a change in terms of their work and how much they're going to do, that it should be discussed with the committee and then brought back to the council if necessary.
And they have everything mapped out, they're going to do in Milltown now to finish up?
The roads that we have planned out for the road improvements this year are Ackerman, Howard, Blueberry, and a section of Reva.
Okay.
Or that was what was proposed.
Okay.
Obviously, it's depending on resources and everything.
Right, right. But so PSENG has everything laid out, what they're going to work on?
They do, but I think that what, one of the things that they believe they're going to expand the project to another phase, and that's, I think, what should be discussed with you folks soon.
Okay, yes, okay, good. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
I did have a question, it's eluding me. It'll, it'll come back.
We can come back.
It'll come back.
We can eat into Mr.
Don't go anywhere, Mike.
We can eat into Mr. Vignolo's time. Our borough attorney, any report this evening?
Yeah, I was very excited about the invasive species ordinance, but by the time you guys get to me, we've discussed anything I have to say about 16 times between you all, so.
Thank you for setting that up.
No, no problem. I'm going to be petitioning to move my, my comments up earlier in the agenda, so somebody will listen to what I have to say.
So we can have pictures next to the H.
Yeah, I'll see if I can do a slideshow, PowerPoint. I have no idea what most of these things are, so I'll be working with the Environmental Commission, because they certainly do.
That's exactly why, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, now we go to the mayor's report.
Wait.
Oh, you got it?
It's back.
It's too late.
Mike, just a quick question. I know we submitted grant applications for, to DOT. When do we expect to hear back on those, the DOT projects?
Usually September.
September?
Yeah, September, October, yeah.
So hopefully, maybe by the, by the end of October, we'll, we'll know whether or not we're going to be able to move forward with some of those?
Yes.
Okay. And then with that, what happens if, if one of those streets falls under the same area of work proposed by PSENG? And we find out prior to accepting the grant funds?
We've been coordinating with them, they, for example, Hag and Bateane, they went and did the work over there, just did trench repairs. So if it is the work going to be on one-on-ones, you're proposing, have worked, then we'll have them come in early and get, get your road work done after that, so. And then you get a credit for half the pavings.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're ahead of the, you know, ahead of it, that they're going to get in, get out, and then we can get credited the paving.
By your direction, the council's direction, the bridges, Ralph is all over it, so it's really important.
Thank you. Okay, now we can go to the mayor's report. So first, I wanted to thank the Rec Department for organizing the 21st 9/11 candlelight vigil over at the American Legion. It was held last night, Councilwoman O'Donnell and Councilwoman Zambrana and I were there, and it was a lovely ceremony showing that we will never forget. And so we, you know, we appreciate everyone that came out, certainly all our first responders, so they did a lovely job as always. As Councilman Revulinski mentioned, we're back to school. I see the borough employees and crossing guards are out there, so please be mindful of all our pedestrian traffic with the children back to school. I will look forward to seeing everyone on October 1st on Milltown Day. The clerk has asked me to ask, to announce that we still have a few openings, believe it or not, Election Day is coming up in a couple of months, so we need a couple more poll workers, so if you're interested in being a poll worker, please call the clerk's office at extension 119. She will give you the information that you would need to, to do that. We do have early voting and vote by mail, but this is for the November, what's, what's Election Day?
November 8th, it's Tuesday, November 8th, and I just have three slots left, but I would like to fill them and be able to get people up to training or whatever they need to do, so if anyone's interested, that'd be great, give me a call.
That sounds good, and thanks to Rec for all the summer programs. It's nice to hear that Rec and seniors and, you know, everyone has a lot of good programs going on now, so we're happy to hear that. And thank you to the borough administrator and all the folks in the offices here that set up a really nice employee appreciation barbecue last week. You know, we started this when we came out of COVID to say how much we appreciated that Milltown was one of the few towns that kept all of their services going through COVID, no interruption to garbage pickup, no interruption to the office staff, you know, they've worked from home a little, but, you know, we wanted to show the appreciation. And we said this year, you know, even though COVID's done, we still certainly appreciate everything that all of the employees do. So it was a really nice day, we had a barbecue, we had games, not to brag, but you're looking at the cornhole champion of the borough of Milltown.
Half of the team.
I have a, I have a plaque and everything.
Oh, boy.
So anyway, it was very nice and appreciate you for doing all that. And with that, we will move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before the council this Hearing none, I will move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before us this evening?
I alluded to something earlier, if I could expand on that a little bit. So the Historic Preservation Committee identified a potential grant, and we're very excited about submitting an application and pulling all the pieces together, and then we realized we don't have a set aside for grants that we didn't know about at the time that we established the budget. And then another grant came in that looked like an, oh, wow, and the same, you know, same scenario. So their suggestion was, and this may have to go to the Finance Committee first, but that'd bring it to everyone's attention for, as something to think about, is to potentially have a fund source set aside so that we can take advantage of the grants. And the funds that we provide are usually what they refer to as a match, and sometimes when that match has to be in cash, we would need a source of funds. Sometimes the match can be in the form of in-kind, such as our services, but when it means a ca, a cash match, we can't get any grants that we didn't know about when we passed the budget, so something to consider for next year.
Right, because if you did a matching grant and we were super excited to get that grant and it was $500,000, there still has to be part of the match that comes out of the borough budget for $500,000, right?
Right.
So that's the reason that we have to be mindful of, of the grants, especially the ones that are matching, right, Jeanette?
Correct. A grant of $500,000 might require the borough to have a $50,000 match or something like that, so we're not looking for $500,000 necessarily, but, yeah, to obtain a grant of that size. These, the grants we were looking at were, were smaller than that, but we still missed out because we didn't have 10% cash match.
Right, and, and we're certainly going to, we would apply for anything that's a full grant, but if it's a matching or something that requires expenditure by the borough, it has to sort of be vetted first, right?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else have any new business?
Sorry.
No, final needs?
The last one, Newbauer, excuse me.
We are going to have a DPW meeting upcoming, as Mike said, to talk about the roads, but one thing that was discussed at our last DPW meeting was potentially putting together, instead of every year deciding on a road to apply for a grant.
Anna, the audience members are saying they can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys.
Can't hear what the minister.
I have a cold and I really don't want to get anyone else's, not COVID. I just don't, I don't want to pass it on to anyone, it's a real.
Maybe you can use the microphone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me, I'll lean forward now. Can you hear now?
Yes.
There you go.
Is this better?
That's good.
Okay. At the last council, at the last DPW meeting, we were discussing potentially putting together, instead of having to have a meeting that's purely focused every year on what roads to apply for, for the DOT, and what roads to apply for now that we've restarted the inter-local, we were talking about putting together a list that moving forward, and actually Lou from CME was in attendance at the last DPW meeting and said he would start looking into when all of the roads in town had been done previously.
Well, that's good.
So that way, we could just do it based on a, and hopefully get it on a schedule, so it's not coming to so many years down the line that all of a sudden some roads haven't had attention in so many years.
That's good.
So that was just something I wanted to bring up. I'm not sure if we'll finish it by the end of the year, but that's something we wanted to talk about at the next DPW meeting, and I just wanted to make sure it was okay.
Perfect, that's good, sounds good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, just because it is campaign season, I just wanted to ask Mr. Vignolo his opinion on this, or even the council in that matter, is, I understand political signs have like a 30-day lifespan, that we're not supposed to put them out 30 days before Election Day. And mind you, this is no intent to have anyone tear theirs down, I'm just curious, do we need to amend our ordinance now that we have such early voting in the format that it's been changed since COVID with it being basically 30 days in advance? Is that something that we should be amending our ordinances, or?
Well, it's a question of how long you want to see signs. So if you've got a 30-day lifespan for the signs, then that's what someone is allowed to do, I think it's 30 days before the election. If the council were to have an appetite for a longer period in light of the fact that you now have vote by mail that goes out much earlier than Election Day, that could be something, it's really, you guys are the council.
No, I just, I'm sure if, if you'd seen or heard.
Have to be 30 days before.
As you say, I don't, I don't recall exactly what the, the ordinance says, I can look at it if you'd like.
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind, because I believe it was 30 days before the election, and so now that we have basically voting that starts at the end of September, it probably makes sense for us to either make it 60 days before the November date, or signify that September voting date as a start date of pre-election.
I've seen signs around East Brunswick since about the beginning of August.
Is there a way to make it, instead of so many days before or after that, you have a season specifically for political signs? Because that way, say if we extend it to 60 days, but somebody posts theirs a week before elections, then it's going 60 days into past the election season?
Well, typically, there's a cutoff, I believe, of Election Day, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, they, they usually have to be down by that date, so that way you don't see them for a protracted period of time, because really, they don't have any real value after the Election Day.
Okay.
And then we have to consider also primary elections as well, if there was ever a contention.
True.
Just, just food for thought, it came up and I figured I'd, you know.
You figured we worked through that, that new ordinance that went on tonight, so we needed something else.
Yeah, you need something important, understand.
You just want to, you want to be able to call, so it's all, it's all good.
Picture of a political sign. And I, if you have looked around town lately, last, what, year or so, Jeanette, I, one of the things that our code enforcement has been very diligent about is going around and getting rid of the signs that were willy-nilly stuck and tacked and nailed all over town, so that's something that when you go, you know, there used to be just a bunch at that little grassy area by Home Depot and any open area, so they, they've been very good about trying to enforce that the signs just can't be plunked around and, and left there. So, you know, while there will be some political signs coming up, it'll just be for a short period, and then we'll, we'll try and keep everything clean. Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll close that and move on to audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. If a member has specific questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Russ Einbinder, 152A North Main Street, I wish UPS and FedEx would realize that when they deliver stuff, I try and tell them. Based on what Councilmember Revulinski was just saying, and our council was just saying also, one of the things we're doing this year, I was going to announce anyway tonight, is that we're having our annual candidates forum, like we do every year, but instead of mid-October, we're doing it two weeks, basically the night after the next meeting, it's the 28th of September, which, you know, council, in fact, I'm sending out the rules, regulations, I had to change some things in the committee first. And.
Here?
That's going to happen right here in this room, like it always does. It's, taping starts at 7:30, the public can invite to come in anytime after 6:45 to start, you know, handing in, you know, writing out questions, et cetera, et cetera, the same exact format. The difference is, we're doing it earlier, primarily because it's 2022 and there's a lot more people, there are a lot more people that do things by mail, et cetera, so it's fair to all the candidates to kind of get their message out there a few weeks earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you said, I'm sorry, Russ, did you say that Tuesday after the next meeting?
No.
Day after.
Wednesday, okay, because I was just going to say we just moved it to a Tuesday.
No, no, no.
So we have, our next council meeting is Tuesday, September 27th, and the council's candidate forum is Wednesday, September 28th.
Yes.
A fun-filled week here at Borough Hall. Alan, yes, that were you.
Alan Godber, Forfait Place. The Longspur Water Shed Partnership is holding their annual bicycle ride, and that's on a week from Saturday, the 24th, and it starts early in the morning, so it starts just up the hill here at the Longspur Water Shed Partnership headquarters. At 9 o'clock, it's signed up from 8:30. We ride 26 miles, but that takes about three hours or so, because we go down to the southern end of the watershed, then we have refreshments down there, half a meal, basically, and, and then we come back in a slightly different direction through North Brunswick and back into Milltown, so we cover, I don't think we go into New Brunswick, we do do the other, the other four towns, so this is.
Do they just show up, or do they need to sign up now?
Yes. If you sign up on the day of the ride, it will cost $10 if you let people know ahead of time at, oh, let me see, Michael Shikarson's in charge of this, so I'll give you his telephone number, it's 732-249-5297.
Okay. Alan, if you'll leave that flyer with me, I'll make sure that I hang it up in the Borough Hall for you tomorrow morning.
Thank you, that's very kind of you. There are several copies out there I left earlier today.
Right.
So the, the cost generally is $5 unless you're a member of the Longspur Water Shed Partnership, in which case it's free.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Eileen Thomas, 7 Karina Drive.
Good evening.
On Memorial Day weekend, I had a tree fall out of the woods behind our home, completely demolish our shed, and knocked down a piece of fence, and missed the house by just a few feet. I called the police, they came right out, it was 12:30. 9 o'clock in the morning, I did receive a call from Ralph Jaznowski. He sent three men out there, they immediately cleaned up everything, they were there four hours, and then we started to work on getting the rest of the tree down. And two and a half months later, it came down, because we had to wait for a budget to be approved and for all of this to go through. And my biggest problem here is that that And my biggest problem here is that that woods needs to be cleaned out. You could start severing them with your papers, because, I mean, I have not seen anybody go in those woods since Rich Williams was head of the Public Works. And it really is bad. Trees are on top of each other, pushing other trees, you know, toward our home. So, this, that's a big problem. My next problem is, as I go down to the borough to ask them when the private company's coming, they asked me, "Am I putting up a new shed?" I said, "Yes, we ordered it from the Amish, and it will be coming as soon as we know that everything's clear." And they said, "What size?" I said, "The same size, 10 by 14, like the other shed." So, they said, "Oh, you need a permit." I said, "Okay, fine." So, I applied for the permit. They called me the next day and say, "It's denied because you can't put the shed five feet from the fence. It now has to be 10." That'll set the shed in the middle of my backyard. The average home in Milltown is 50 by 100 long. On the other side of town where the older lots are, it's 30, 35 by 75, 80. You put a shed 10 feet from your fence, you're going to have it on your porch. So, when did this happen? Because I had...
Did you make an appeal? Pardon? Did you appeal that decision?
I, they told me I have to apply for a variance. And then what am I going to do? Get a lawyer? Get a site plan?
No, I was going to say that, that might, that might be...
I don't know what I did.
It might be more...
You could tell from the room, right?
Unfortunately, it might, it's probably more of a...
I'm sorry?
It's probably more of a question for the planning and zoning board rather than the council.
So, I'd have to go to planning and zoning.
Correct. Which is coming up in the beginning of October, right, Mary? First week, first Wednesday.
No, she, she wouldn't really, she...
You'd have to, yeah, I mean, appeal with the zoning official or, or, you know, do so. Unfortunately, the council, you know, doesn't do the permits. That's the zoning official.
Right. Well, I also wanted to be more aware of the fact that that woods is a problem. I mean, we've been cleaning it up back there for years. You can only cut so high because it's wetlands if you're, if it grows on to, you know, over the fence.
So, on Carina, is that borough, what's behind?
Yeah, there's a, there's a drainage easement that runs basically behind Parkview School and behind the homes on Carina. And you have the easement that is raised up and burned to cover over the pipe, but then on either side, it's pretty wet.
Okay.
Right. Because there's, there's a huge, like, catch basin back there, too. So, it's very wet, and the trees fall a lot.
So, what, is that, and is that something that you can put on the agenda for the DPW for the next committee?
Yep.
And it's dangerous.
Okay.
It's dangerous because kids go back there and play, as you know, Rich, because they, kids are attracted to woods.
Yep. No, we'll take it.
And poison ivy, galore. So, I mean, it does have, that definitely has to be addressed for safety purposes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm actually curious, I'm going to just comment or ask Mr. Vignola. I thought a few years ago, there was an amendment to zoning, and anyone up here, Jeanette or anyone can chime in, I thought there was an amendment to the zoning regulations that allowed for you to put your fence on the property line, that it didn't have to have that setback and create the gap between your fence and your neighbor's fence.
I would need to take a look. I will openly admit that I don't know every provision of, every part of the ordinance. I can check it out.
The reason I mention that is because I thought at that time, it was also amended to say that the sheds could be placed closer. I think it was like the pools in the sheds didn't have to be so far set back because there was the consideration of the fact that it would put...
I don't know.
These things in the middle of people's...
I can look at your bulk regulations and see.
It comes to mind, I think, maybe three years ago, but...
But you would, the zoning official would know that, so I'm sure he's working off of whatever he has.
And I, I can take a look and see what your bulk regulations are and see, I mean, obviously, you have different zones in your town, and most of the time, your, excuse me, your accessory structure standards are different based upon which zone it is. So, your, your smaller lots usually have a few, smaller setbacks than a larger zone.
Peter, I can provide you those bulk requirements, because I looked that up for Mr., Ms. Thomas.
I was going to say, I, I have them already. They're in my office. I just don't, it's not...
I believe she lives in Zone 10, and it is a 10-foot.
Hmm? Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and go to council comments. Does any member of the council have any last comments this evening? Seeing none, I will close council comments and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilwoman Kuretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much. Hey, Mike.
I was going to say, audience ratings, vote 75.